To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everybody to the April 3th meeting session.
Well, springtime, you'll have to sock socks.
Nine thirty AM.
Never?
Your people town hall, we have wardrobe malfunction going on here.
He wanted to know why they have socks on.
Okay, well, it's, uh, wow.
It's summertime.
For that, but if the secretary, sockless treasurer, would call the roll, that would be great.
Scott Hawitz, president.
I'm here.
William Powell is here, Edward J. Warner.
President.
Ann Walker.
Here.
And Warren Parrish.
President.
Okay, we have a forum, let's, um, let's have a quick conversation about our priority dredge list. Trustee Warner, I would suspect it's unusual suspects.
Well, um, most of the, uh, asks that we had for last year were done. Um, I know North Sea Harbor has been, uh, done last year, but it's on the radar again. I talked to, uh, Scott Hilarie, Suffolk County DPW, they're looking to help to get some survey from the, uh, Bay Constables on that. But, uh, basically it's, uh, North Sea Harbor and, uh, this Long Neck Canal in, up in Flanders that are the ones that we're looking to have done this spring.
Fresh Pond.
You know, permitting issues with Long Neck, but we're trying to work through them with help of the community and, uh, yourself and me, uh, calling, you know, multiple agencies. Um, but Cold Springs and Sabonic and, uh, Fresh Pond are the ones that we are going to ask for priority, because they have permits, active permits. And if North Sea doesn't get dredged this spring, we're going to ask for that to be done, um, as early as possible. They did a September dredging at Fresh Pond this year, and, uh, we would probably ask for that again, um, hopefully to get that done as soon as possible. But hopefully it's done for the voting season because...
We would have had calls on North Sea Harbor, people going in and out.
And we forwarded paperwork, we forwarded the, uh, the work that the Bay Constables did, thank you very much, to Scott Hilarie.
And one thing about North Sea is the county has a new landing craft that they're going to do some of their projects. They were in and out of North Sea. The channel is deep enough and wide enough to navigate it. It's a little bit, it's to their template, but it's, uh, I think if it's not dredged this year, we're going to need our marine maintenance guys to put extra markings there so they can navigate it, because that was the conversation I had with Scott.
The public has been raising issue with it, and in addition, we did forward the drone footage and the drone shots over there this morning for them to review. I know they went in and out with the landing craft. It is a very dynamic inlet. Um, it is just April 3rd, and, you know, so let's see where we go, but we're going to keep advocating. We are, we do have a back and forth going with the folks from Flanders and getting the Army Corps and all those permits kind of lined up. So that's, that's kind of been going back and forth.
And there's one other project that I, we've been working on is, uh, the East Channel in Shinnecock Bay. The county did do a survey with their survey crew. Um, there is quite a bit of shoaling, uh, in two spots. They asked, uh, for the Bay Constables to go out and do a site visit and give local knowledge of the most current, uh, situation as far as the shoaling. And if it's, uh, and there's money for the fall dredging, uh, to happen, uh, already in the county's coffe, so, uh, all we need is that material to show the county that it needs to be dredged ASAP, and that would be a fall project in Shinnecock Bay.
Right. I do have somebody here that has a, um, you know, a large stake in dredging in our township. I have Jeff Strong here, just as a matter of coincidence. You, you want to add anything to the record relative to dredging, or you could shake yes or no, and if you say yes, then you got to come up here.
At North Sea?
Yeah.
Just come to...
You got to come up if you want to speak on it, you can't do it from there.
Well, I think you could speak to North Sea and, uh, Fort Pond too.
Right, right. So if you, if you want to get on the record, since we're having this conversation about priority dredging, and you do have quite an interest, you can just announce who you are and the record.
President of Strong's Marine, as you state, we have marines both on, you know, Old Fort Pond and on, on North Sea. And they both, even though the one was dredged, as you say, a year ago, thankfully, uh, it kind of gets squirrely, you know, at the entrance there, which is, I think, what trustee Warner was referring to. And, uh, Old Fort Pond just needs it badly, you know, that, you know, that definitely needs it badly. The amount of boats we have at both, uh, cusher boats, you know, at both locations is pretty significant, so from an economic standpoint, it's, it's a pretty high priority for sure.
Okay. We thank you for that.
Thank you.
It's always good, especially from folks that are so engaged in that maritime part of the township as you are.
Yes.
I can add on to the, uh, Fort Pond project. Uh, myself and Scott have been attending meetings. I've been on the board seventeen years, and prior to that, my father was on the board for twenty-six years. And this whole dredging, uh, project actually took place prior to him being on the board in his late sixties, so, you know.
Got transferred from, from father to son, and then as initiation to myself, so I've been going to these meetings for like ten years now, but it's close though.
If we could just, if you could expand just a bit on where we stand with Old Fort Pond, because when I look back in some of my dad's records, my dad came to the trustees as a representative for the Marine Science Center at Southampton College in the early sixties, begging the trustees to, to have the pond dredged. So I, I think that after whatever that is, decades, we need to have some movement here. So when you say we're close, what does that mean? Expand on that a little.
Over the, almost a little over a half a century of looking into this dredging project, I don't think we're any closer than we were back when it originally happened, because originally when they did the dredging in all these ponds, they had a lot of areas around there where, that was undeveloped, uh, Roscoe Island and, uh, Little Neck Road, that they actually put the material. And the surplus material on a lot of these projects were pumped to the barrier beach. Uh, they no longer have that ability to do that. So we're in the process, because we, the trustees had given them two permits to, for de-watering at Little Neck, uh, two, uh, two properties.
Right.
Um, and they looked at, uh, Middle and Far Pond, the, that deposition site. But now they came up with another idea that they want to put the material over to college, either on the, uh, football or, uh, athletic field, or in the parking lot. And none of these make sense, because this stuff has to de-water for six or eight months. It smells pretty bad. Um, so they really have to come up with a, a better, um, site to put this material. My personal opinion, if we could work with the Shinnecock Nation and looking at that, uh, their western facing beach by their graveyard and points to the north, it's badly eroded, and if we could use that material, because I mean, it is some, uh, organics, but there's a lot of rocks and stones in there, and it would be a good to, a bottom layer to add some spoil that when they do the east cut again, if that sand is put there, then it would be a nice mix and they'll make a nice beach. And it would shore up their beach, and it, you know, basically it would serve as a public benefit. You've got a nice dredging project, navigation, ecology of the pond, and then beach restoration. So, I mean, but that's in a perfect world.
Right, but we're not in a perfect world, and the reality is, it's about opting for the, uh, best bad solution for a problem, okay? And, you know, you have a lot of activity that, that's going on. And the reason why I say I think it's, it's getting a lot further than it has in the past is because in the meetings that I've been, have been with people at every single level that there, that there is, that have the ability to, um, formulate the budget and formulate the engineering and coordinate all the regulatory authorities that need be, okay? And as they work through each one of these, uh, solutions that are all challenging, because you have to pump material, you know, across Montauk Highway if you're going to get it to areas such as the gym, or you're going to get it to areas. There were concerns and objections that, that, you know, spanned many different topics because of all the activity that people, you know, have plans for, for that property. But in the last conversations, and I don't want to get ahead of the County Department of Public Works and Dredge Crew, they were boiling it down to the point of perhaps being in a direction where there was something that actually could happen, okay? Where you had everything that was lining up. Is it going to be the perfect thing where, you know, to get everything? Probably not, but it would suit, you know, the best that they could possibly do with the resources that they have. So I'm going to leave it at that, because they're still set to have some more meetings. But looking at the progression of where we went through to where we are perhaps now, I think you're at a point in time where you may see something in a more reasonable amount of time than what you're talking about, decades of non-activity, because it's been on the calendar with a lot of people having conversations. Um, so there is hope.
So in other areas, not so much maybe in New York, but in other parts of our world, there's much work being done with beneficial use of dredge spoil. And as Ed is saying, the Shinnecock Nation would be a perfect candidate for that, to help with the, the, the erosion as a result of sea level rise and et cetera. There's been a fair amount of work that's been done in other parts of the world. Maybe it's time to suggest that.
I believe that's already been done, and I believe those conversations have already been had. And again, I caution the fact that I don't want to get ahead of the Suffolk County Dredge Crew, folks that are at the state legislature level that are working on this as well and having these conversations. These, these ideas have been put on the table among people, as I say, at the senate and assembly level, and very, very high up at state university level as well, okay? They've all been around that table, they've had these conversations, and they've had conversation with those folks. There, there's questions about the grade, the actual grade of that material, okay? And whether it is a, you know, a good spot or not, this is not anything that's new. This is, these are all things that have been discussed. And there's a tremendous amount of engineering that has to go up and into this in order to be able to pump these things and get the return water back. So what I'm, what I'm basically saying is, is that from my perspective of the guy who's been in these meetings of the most latest point in time, it, it has transitioned, these conversations have gone through this whole point to where, when we're having a conversation, I do not want to get ahead of the Department of Public Works, because these folks, they really do a lot of work for our township, and they, they, they're, they, they work very hard, they're professional, they know what they're doing. You're, you're battling with regulatory authorities, you're battling with budgets, you're battling with engineering. That material, granular makeup is what it is. Rest assured, all of what you're saying has been discussed at those, at those forums, and I think it's getting to a point where it's getting to where there's a project that could actually happen. But I, we, we really should involve them in the conversation, not get ahead of them.
I was going to ask, is there anything from Strong's Marine's perspective, maybe, you know, writing a support letter to the county or anything like that?
I, I think really what the, you know, to, to your point, I think what we should do perhaps is get a, a, an update for the board of exactly where the committee's at and where they're at. And then at that point in time, we can have a conversation with those folks and say, what is it that you need? There's more than likely in areas for, for reasons that, that Edward had pointed out as well, because with dredge spoils, there has to be an area where you're de-watering. And yeah, it does smell, it's decaying organic matter.
A lot of water.
Right, so at the end of the day, you know, you're, you're going to get a tremendous environmental benefit, economic benefit, navigation benefit, public safety benefit, but you, you have to go through a period of time where there's, there's a couple of factors that are, that are, you know, uh, difficult. And it'll probably arise to the point where there is a, a public hearing. And, and, you know, realistically, that's the time at which we're, support letters and, and all of this, you know, come out and come to fruition. But you got to have respect for the process, and, and I'm telling you, from someone that's sat through this, you, you, they are making progress. It is a difficult lift to get done, because it has to, you know, check off so many boxes for it to actually happen.
What, what's the, um, most, uh, the vessel with the most length and the most draft that can be accommodated?
Um, we can have up to, I'll say comfortably forty feet on the end, you know, docks, and the draft on those is around four, four and a half feet.
Right.
So they struggle for sure.
Even at high tide?
High tide, you're...
You have to...
You're okay.
Yeah, further than you...
You know, a narrow window.
Right.
But anything less than high tide is a problem.
You have areas, you have areas that are south of the Shinnecock Canal that we're working on also. That's not the responsibility of the county of Suffolk, but the responsibility of the Army Corps.
Yeah.
Where we have soundings at mean low water, where theirs around five feet at, at, okay, in, in intercoastal waterway, that's supposed to be maintained by the Army Corps, main thoroughfare of getting vessels from the Shinnecock Canal to either one of the two channels feeding the Shinnecock Inlet.
Yeah.
So this, this problem is, is throughout the entire system.
Yeah.
And requires, uh, attention in a more immediate fashion.
Yeah.
Um, so we, we're working and advocating, but dredging is no easy task.
No.
But we're on it.
So just to focus away from Old Fort Pond for a minute, but while you're here, to address North Sea Harbor, will the spoils go to the east or to the west with this dredging cycle? Because they, they were predominantly to the east for many years, and then they went to the west this past year, but will they stay to the west?
It depends if we can get anisement on the Druckamela property again. That was the, what the town had worked with last time, uh, with the attorney's office, drafting anisement to allow the material to be placed, uh, just east of North Sea Beach Colony. And my understanding is that North Sea Beach Colony project was supposed to get about thirty-five thousand cubic yards of material. I don't think they've even come close to that yet, so, and I think it was supposed to be done in stages, allowing them to build up the beaches in front of their bulkheads and reconstitute the beach going in front of the town road in there. So I, I would advocate for it to go to the west at least a couple more times. Um, that way, town point in that area would, uh, kind of like be more natural for the bird nesting and stuff like that. What has happened over thirty years of dredging, you have very hard dunes, and it's not really conducive to good, uh, you know, bird nesting, especially plovers, they like, you know, kind of all that could each area.
Right.
So it's, it's a balance.
I think with the new landing craft and some of the new equipment they have, they've been able to work logistics a little bit better on moving materials, so I think some of these issues may be resolved. I think, I think, you know, really what would be good is to get an official update from the County Dredge Crew. Uh, and again, my hat's off to those folks, they do a really great job. Aren't, aren't, this board, you know, you know, is the interface between, you know, our community, right?
Yeah.
And, and the county, and we, we really do get a, a good chunk of work out of them, because as you know, it's a very dynamic situation.
For sure. Because they acquired this landing craft, they can actually do Fresh Pond in, uh, Neuyak or North Sea and put the material on the east side of the channel, something that hasn't been done for over thirty years. I got pictures on my phone from the county of how badly eroded that, those properties are. We just can't believe it unless you go down there personally. So with, with them acquiring a new, uh, you know...
That's big.
Tool, they can, and it's like Sabonic, Billy, when we asked it to be put on the east side of Sabonic, now they can have a landing craft so they can stage their, you know, their pipes and stuff like that. So it gives them, you know, more tools in their chest and...
To save that island.
Yes, so.
Good.
We, we try to do...
Happy to help anywhere.
I appreciate that. I'm glad you were here coincidentally, because your input is very helpful, and we hit the point in time where there's public hearing, certainly we're going to, we're going to need your input.
I don't think I heard Neuyak Creek mentioned, and I just requested, uh, soundings from the Bay Constables for that as well, uh, at the entrance, uh, the south end of Jessup's Neck.
Yes, I, I had talked...
Some of us.
Right?
Yeah, great. I just wasn't sure it was mentioned here, so I just wanted to...
Was it Thursday I sat with you and went over the list, pretty much what was done, what needs to be done?
Yeah.
And I asked everybody...
Changes, let me know in the mail.
Yep.
It's what the discussion's for.
Yep.
Right, I mean, you know, obviously the priority is that spot to the south of the Shinnecock Canal as well, but that's not the county's responsibility, that's working in a different area with the Army Corps of Engineers.
And there isn't even a permit, an active permit for that project.
Right, well, yes.
That's, that's the problem.
They, they can, uh, you know, maybe the congressman's office, I think, maybe could have, uh, some pull in, uh, fast-tracking something that's so needed for the community.
Yep.
Let them deal with that. All right, so does that conclude our discussion about the priority dredge list?
You guys good with this? I'm going to forward it to the Bay Constables, and they're going to do the assessments, so that way we can send it, um, before April twenty eighth to...
And can you ask them in their, you know, out on the water, if there's any other areas that need, uh, to be looked at as far as, you know, placing stuff on the dredge list? You know, because I mean, we're not everywhere as in the town. I mean, it goes all the way from Eastport to basically Sag Harbor, so there are, there are other places that need, I know need to be dredged, but we're just not...
Yeah, I had mentioned it to, um, Bay Constable Renshaw, and he, uh, said that he'd keep an eye out.
Yep. Because Sag Harbor's another area that's, that's going to be, i- is in bad need of dredging, but it's out of our jurisdiction, it's actually in the, probably the village of, uh, you know, Sag Harbor, and we did contact the harbor master down there and tried to work with him to get an update on that shoaling too.
Okay. Trustee Warner, you have Far Pond discussion on here as well, and I see Mr. Walker here for NDR Science.
Yes. We have, uh, worked on a, tried to work with the community and, uh, the board and, and the county to do a little bit of a change in the plans that were originally, uh, the dredging project of Far Pond, uh, to try to cut down on some erosion on the east side of the channel, and to try to utilize some of the material that has subsequently, uh, built up, uh, a large peninsula on the west side. We had asked NDR Science and specifically, uh, Mr. Walker here to look into it for us, for the board.
All right. Um, we're hoping that we've done everything that we have to do at Fresh Pond. Um, one of the projects that's been sitting idle for a short period of time is Far Pond. The idea is to mechanically move the north end of the, uh, channel over to approximately where it used to be. And I sent, had a, a real quick and dirty, uh, drawing, which would allow the channel to get further away from the end of the road, and that material to be picked up and moved, uh, mechanically to the trustee property. And that's about as complicated as it gets. But before we start making permit applications, I thought, uh, we would try to get consensus from the board that this is approximately what Eric Schultz was working on, and I believe that it is. Um, I spoke with Ed a couple times. I told him, we're not going to go out into the bay, we're not going to, uh, go to eel grass beds, we're not going to go to shellfish, uh, areas, but the area is, um, from the shoal into the pond, move it over, put the material at the trustee property, and then stabilize the old bank there that's been eroding for years and years, and get the sand off the top of the tidal marsh. The first step would be send something to the, uh, County DPW.
Yep.
And that's easy, this is not something that's very difficult. And then if everybody agrees, then we can make applications to the Army Corps and the DEC.
I mean, seeing this simple drawing that you have sent the board, it's pretty much what we had discussed, and, uh, looking back from the sixty's, seventy's, this is where the channel was really running, you know? But over time, it's kind of migrated, whether from erosion or, you know, or, I mean, you can, when is that picture?
This is seventy-six.
Seventy-six. You can see that the channel is, you know, it's really much further west in there, and then over time, it's by the dredging and the erosion, everything is, you know, pushed to where it is now, which is, you know, pushing much closer to Four Pond, a road, and also causing some erosion on the, uh, eastern shore. I mean, that's pretty telling on, on the...
And that sand ends up on top of the tidal marsh.
Yeah.
Which is a bad situation, but the trustee property at the end of the road is also eroded, you know, substantially. These, these are things that are probably manageable, probably, uh, would be accomplished by the town in conjunction with the DPW instead of just by the DPW. I think it makes sense to mechanically dredge the uphill side of the dredge channel, put sand where it needs to be, plant beach grass.
Well, I mean, the last meeting Scott and I attended, the Zoom meeting, it was, the ball was in our park, basically come up with a plan that we thought would work best for the pond, the community, uh, the trustees and everybody. Uh, and I think this is, where you start the channel is, uh, basically where the old channel was on the southerly end, so you're not going to have any issues with eel grass beds, and, uh, you know, going across that peninsula that is currently there, there's no tidal marsh there, everything that is tidal marsh is west of that, so you'd just be shifting the inlet to where it historically was back in the seventies.
James, when's that picture from?
This is twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
And by the way, Ian, we have all kinds of correspondence and support materials provided by Mr. Durie, just a huge amount of stuff. So we would go to the, uh, DPW with a bunch of air photos and your expert opinion from your coastal geologist, all that stuff is already in place, and it could simply be assembled and sent with a quick cover letter and a, um, schematic plan, and we could start the process and see what the DPW has to say.
Right, yeah, we got to get something to the DPW.
Yeah, that's, that's why...
This is, is simple but effective, right?
I think the more simpler you make it, the more likely it is, it's would move ahead.
I think you're, I think you're correct. Because I think if it gets too complex, it's...
Do we need a resolution to authorize it?
We don't do a resolution here anyway, but you already get it, Scott. We probably would.
We already have a resolution authorizing us to do the work.
Okay, do, okay. Trying to make sure.
So that's probably ten months old or...
Yeah, recall.
The only, the only resolution that we would need would be a letter of support crafted by the trustees, uh, backing up what we have.
Correct.
And we would, then we would send a similar letter off to the DPW.
Right, I think that's what started it.
Okay.
That's what trustee Paul, I think, was referring to.
Yeah, just to make sure.
Right.
Yep.
That's, that's...
That's great, thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Very much, thanks, Ed.
See you later.
All right, so now we can move right on to the general permit applications for determination. I got Billy Mack here from First Coastal. I have three dredge projects, I got one that's twelve millimetre, twenty post lane, twenty-two post lane. These, these all, um, you can handle them probably all in one shot, Billy, you think?
I think, I, that'd be great.
Probably be...
Good, thanks.
Come on.
And to you.
Three thousand seventy-eight square feet, uh, to four mean low water, loud navigation through canal waters, approximately a hundred and thirty cubic yards of material to be dredged, placed to an upland location on twenty post lane, so you have spoil site, and, um, that works out well. Uh, the next one is approximately a hundred and sixty cubic yards, also going to twenty post lane. And then you have, um, uh, three hundred and ten cubic yards, uh, going to the same. And then anything that's excess is going to be trucked off-site to a DEC-approved site. These projects have substantial, um, public support from the village mayor, from the police chief, from the fire chief of Quag. Um, you know, dredging, we, we had this conversation with Mr. Strong and the board about the difficulties in this dredging and keeping the, uh, you know, keeping our waterways navigable.
All right, the police boat is kept in this, uh...
In this canal? Right, so I mean, you, you have everything, you know, from our board's perspective, I mean, I, I think you, you're good to go.
And all sediment samples have been done, so that we know what, what we're dredging, where it's going. You know, that, and that's always the question, and we want to make sure that when the material's dredged, that it goes to the...
To the right spot.
To the right spot.
This is going up land.
Going up land.
Uh, I believe the guys have the construction.
Twenty post.
Twenty posts is in the middle lot.
Yeah, it's going there, and then anything...
It's basically going to be used in the system, which is the DEC's philosophy.
Right.
So that's, that's a good project.
You're right, it's, it's ready to go from our perspective, so, you know, he's got the other regulatory authorities, that's them, but I, I think this is good to advance as a whole.
This may be not appropriate, but I'm just looking at the finger at the south end, like right at the entrance there, does that get addressed?
That, that was put there for protection. No, that, that was put there, that was potentially put there with stones for protection of the property there, so that's...
Fifteen, twenty years ago.
Yeah, that's not going to go, that's...
I remember the one that we got permits for.
Ten years ago, they bolstered that thing up, like around ten years ago.
That used to have grass on it, it used to be like a flour shoeing weapon.
Yeah, no, no, that's different.
If you go back about thirty years, it's, it's marsh there.
Right.
And the erosion over time, it just, I only have one question, on the very east And the erosion over time, it just, I have one question, on the very east side, on the south end of that, is that shoaling enough to, right where that, a little bit right, that where that cursor is there, is that shoaling where it needs to be dredged to get in and out, or is that deep enough to navigate?
Do you think that spot is deep enough? It's just actually when you get into the entrance, right by the E and Quag is where the shoal...
Okay.
You have...
I mean, you've done depth surveys, so you know.
Yeah, you have a top...
He's got this, and there's also several letters in here from the chief and from the, from the fire chief there as well, so I think...
No, it looks like you have six feet, no, that's good here.
Yeah, I think he's, yeah, I think you're, I think you're good. I think these are good to advance.
Yeah, most of it's pretty good.
So you've got all these letters in here.
No, no, I'm worried about the depth.
Yeah, no, I got you.
Okay.
They've, they've kind of looked at this, so I think you're good.
Okay.
So this can advance, in my opinion.
All right, thank you guys very much.
Thanks, Billy.
Thank you.
All, all of them, Lisa.
Yeah.
Okay, trustee pal?
I have Enter Science, 1770 North Sea Road.
You've got a lot on today, buddy.
Sorry.
It's okay.
You might as well just stay here.
It's okay.
This is a renewal. Used to be Noah's appear, new guy bought it, Giles Magnum. We have engineered plans, it's the same thing that, this is another Eric Schultz thing. He carefully reviewed a whole bunch of stuff there. We have two different permits, and we're asking for a renewal.
This, it ran out, right?
Yeah, it's, it's a renewal, but not a renewal, so it's a new application because the permit expires.
New permits that function as a renewal.
Right, did somebody drop the ball or?
No, the property got sold. It takes a while for the new guy to figure out what he's doing.
When is he going to put the bulkhead in?
Well, not this year. We have a L-Wave swimming past there.
Yeah, swimming by, that's, that's...
I would say possibly this fall.
Yeah, I think that...
After the season's over?
Probably after Thanksgiving, because L-Waves, some of them return during the fall run. So after Thanksgiving, Christmas, January would be the perfect time, everything...
When I first met this guy, I told him, "Listen, don't ask me to get you a new permit unless you intend to do the work right away." So he told me to get the permit, so hypothetically, he's going to get the work done right away. Obviously can't do it now.
He's going to do, how much dredging is he going to do? He's going to do the whole length?
Incidental dredging is whatever shows on Steve Wiesek's plans.
Because right now, it's pretty murky, pretty shallow, and the fish are having a hard time.
They're going to do incidental dredging. It's pretty minor, but it, it's part of your old permit.
Yeah.
I think it's dredging to two or three feet, though.
Which would extend that canal all the way up to, almost to the culvert and Rock Road, which would allow the L-Waves...
That's what I was saying.
...deeper water to conjugate and have safe passage.
You guys had reviewed this extensive...
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Grant was pushing the permit. You're right, it's shallow there, but the, the old bulkhead comes out, the new bulkhead goes where it's supposed to be in place, and then incidental dredging, put the material right behind that.
Bulkhead, yeah.
It's reclamation dredging, basically. The material came from behind the bulkhead, so they replaced it.
It's leaked out for over the years.
We call it incidental dredging, but you can call it whatever you want.
Yeah.
You good?
Can you, can you add the buffer language to the cover sheet?
The what?
The buffer language. You have it on the plan, but not on the cover sheet.
Yeah, that's the only issue, James?
It's got standard plans, so he's, he's good to go.
Mr. Duryea says add the buffer language. We'll give you a new cover sheet.
With a buffer?
But if we, if you're going to add the thing to the...
You want to just do all of it?
I have the next one, too. 85 Down East Lane, Science. Oh my God. She's coming up, she wants you to move.
How are you?
She just wants to share the limelight with you.
Yeah, get out.
Yeah, I'm standing right here. Tell me I'm done.
So, yeah, this is a dock at 85 Down East Lane, sit for 4x12 ramp up, 4x81 fix pier, 4x14 ramp high up, 4x6 drop down, drop platform, sorry, and a kind of grass, 100 feet deep in the water, soundings are about 1.4 feet.
Can you show the four section? Got rid of the middle rails.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Nice thing about this project is a property owner has planted extensive wellens buffers there.
Yeah, this, the property's nice, yeah.
Common Reed is gone, the...
He takes good care of the property when I was there.
New plantings are pretty nice.
The ramp and float, it's a seasonal ramp and float that will be stored upland?
No float.
No float.
It's a platform. They originally wanted a float, we said no.
Yeah, I remember discussing the float, that's why I was...
Got rid of the float and the cross rails.
Okay.
I'm fine with it, she asked everything, she did everything we asked.
I will get you a new next one.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to do my other one, Scott, or you want me to?
Yeah, go ahead. While you're here, I mean...
This is a new project, who, who's, oh, this is Ed.
Yeah.
26 Far Pond.
This is, this is a dock proposed to the pier line with a drop platform, because we're not in deep enough water. This is off of a bulkhead, existing house, it's a new property owner, so we propose what, what he's allowed to build.
Didn't we give a permit for Mr. Recio at another property very close?
Next door.
Next door? So this would be to the...
South, west?
The one, the one next door is a good example about how not to proceed. And I hate to admit to a variety of errors, but we had squires and hold and go out and do soundings there, and the soundings were never accurate. So over here, this is the guy's second piece of property. What we did first was send Fox out and do correct soundings and show the dock at the pier line and show a drop platform instead of a float, because a float is not really appropriate in this part of Middle Pond.
Yeah, I mean, the other property, there was, I'm familiar with it, closer to shore, right next to the bulkhead, there was a dredge project that was done in the 50s there. So when he applied for it, I said the deepest water is closest to shore, but he wanted to keep pushing the dock out to shallow water. This doesn't have that deeper water there, it's pretty much consistent.
It is plain old shallow, so what we're proposing is a drop platform, period, and it's kind of a no-frills dock, but it goes to the pier line, gives the guy what he's allowed to have.
And it could form to our rules and regulations, right, James?
Yes.
I mean, it's, it looks like consistent with what we approved in other places.
We just have to give you engineered plans, that's all.
Okay, so we can move that forward?
Ending.
Ending.
Got it.
Plans.
You're good.
Thanks, guys.
All right, let's go back on track here. We got you, Lisa and Beavaretta, 120 Atlantic Grove, An Consultants. Anybody here from An Consultants? Speak to this application, is this ready to go, Bill, or is this not ready to go?
Not ready to go, yet.
All right, so let's put that one on hold.
It's not ready to go.
They come in, we'll, we'll look at it again.
Trustee Warner?
Yes, Dennis and Doreen Carroll, six-seater drive Hampton Bay's.
Here's the gentleman here. Come on up.
The applicant's asking to add a 4x25-foot open pile deck extension to existing 4x55 open pile pier, install 4x4 throughflow decking staircase on the offshore end for proposed pier extension, install a 10x20-foot mooring pile at the staircase, install two single jet ski lifts, both on each side of the proposed 4x55 extension on 10-inch by 25-foot pilings, all wood construction material to be untreated, and all decking throughflow decking. It acquires the necessary depth for the jet skis. James, this is pretty much what we need, right?
Yeah.
And it could, and it's within the extended property line, so that I think it's an approvable permit. So if anybody has any questions?
Beats the blue book, passes all the tests.
Okay.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You, too. Okay. You've got 27 Norlist, K.R. Shores.
Yeah, I got a whole pile on me.
27 Norlist Drive LLC, Hampton Bay, speaking, K.R. Shores. Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, Gina.
How are you?
Ah, tired.
Tired.
So, 27 Norlist, Ed, did you have a chance to look at it?
Yep, 27 Norlist Drive LLC.
Yes. Bulkhead reconstruction in place, same height, beach grass buffer. He did change the application with like a 4-foot wide walkway landmark with the bulkhead. Also inclusive in the application is the request for a simple ramp coming off the bulkhead and a dock going straight out, a float going straight out, I should say. And then with the slip, it's actually a concrete broken up, like boat ramp, and he wants to remove the concrete and alter the slip so banking it a soft slip.
When you say slip, you mean the ramp?
The ramp, yeah.
What you're saying?
Yeah, it's a boat ramp.
You're saying slip.
I said slip and then I said ramp, sorry. I haven't had enough coffee yet.
You're going to make the slip out?
That's true.
Yeah, I'm like, I'm out of it right now.
It's a slippery ramp.
So it's, it's basically an alteration of a ramp, removing the concrete, importing a little bit of beach sand, like maybe 10 yards roughly, I estimate. I'm making it...
So it's going to be a sand ramp?
Like a sand, yeah, like a sand. You know, so he can pull like his little sailboat.
You have anything that's going to hold the sand back going in?
Yeah, there's going to be so, a new, the newer section of like a low sill, past it, like a vinyl, very similar to that other project on Wells, where you do like...
Low soft bulkhead.
A low sill bulkhead with a sand section, and then it could tier.
Yes.
Depending on how the grade goes and how this goes.
It's all in the plans?
Um, yeah, the plans are, are in there, the sections in there. So it'll end up being like a tiered section of sand.
Okay.
And then he may have to replace some of the sand now and again, depending on the tides, and, you know, it's going to get removed, but he knows that. But he specifically wanted the sand, you know, so it doesn't scratch the bottom of his kayak instead.
The geese will like it.
Yeah, exactly, so are the horseshoe crabs.
And along the bulkhead, you said that he's requested...
Uh, 4-foot wide.
For the entire length?
Uh, just, yeah, the entire length and then up along the, the ramp.
Around the boat ramp, or the boat slip. And then what's behind that?
What?
What's behind that?
The low sill would be a launch.
So it's four feet?
Beach grass, so it'll be a soft slip, beach grass. And he actually wanted the beach grass, because he wants to do this like native landscape part in.
Well, the only question I have is, is 102 feet of 4-foot wide, can we cut that down a little bit? I mean, it's, I mean, that's literally the whole property. And, you know, normally we would put some part of that as, as, you know, decking, so you could put a dock box in, access around the floating dock.
I mean, I could, I could check with him, because, you know, the area where it's not in front of the house that goes north, he may not need it right there, but he definitely wants it along the...
Boat slip.
Yeah, I could see around the perimeter of the boat slip and where the dock is, you know, that, that would make sense. But I mean, you're not elevating it, right? So if you get a severe storm like Sandy, it does a potential for this whole structure to lift up and move.
Well, we do, we, when they do the walkways, they do like a J-bolt system in the footing, so that doesn't happen.
Well, I have experienced...
Not that it, yeah.
Over, you know, am I getting it wrong here?
It could happen, but...
But I was just wondering if you could, when you come up with the engineering, engineered plans, can you show either some kind of helical anchors or some kind of structure where they put a sonnet to down in cement, so it's, it won't lift?
Yeah, we usually do either a cement lift or like a J-bolt.
Yeah, I want, I think as a board, we want to make sure that this structure isn't going to, you know, float away with, with a storm surge, so.
Yeah.
Big storm, all bets are off, I mean, everything, everything breaks loose.
Well, if you do use the light penetrating decking or...
He didn't specify what he wanted.
On these structures, it won't lift.
Yeah.
It's, it's not buoyant, or it allows the water to rapidly rise through it, so, you know, and that would be good for that area versus a wood decking, because you'd have a lot more light penetration and water penetration, and you have a lot less runoff.
So you're going to go back to your client?
I'm submitting notes, yeah.
I, I mean...
I'm going to have to ask him what he wants. Maybe he'll consider float throughflow instead of, you know, cedar.
A reduction, a reduction in the length of the, you know, the walkway.
Yeah, a reduction along the north section.
I mean, we're promoting, you know, good land use techniques, you know, for, for these projects.
And then I'll talk with his contractor, I'm not even sure who his contractor is right now. I think it's CC, and then he'll tell me if he wants to use concrete puddings or, or J-bolt, you know, construction going down.
So we'll have updated cover sheet with that describing that.
Yeah, I need to find, figure this out.
Right, so you're on hold pending discussions in engineering?
Yeah, yes.
So that's on hold. But while, while you're here, why don't you talk about 59 Cliff?
Okay, so 59 Cliff has been pending for quite some time. I specifically wanted to hold it off just to make sure that it was, you know, okay with the other agencies, get comments from the state, that's stuff like that. And so the state came back with, and then we, we modified the application to include some access to the water, because he has a riparian right to access his water. So we have an elevated, slightly elevated throughflow decking 4x20, which is what the DEC said they would approve. Also, they also did request that the original structure, so we're going to go back to, this is how we not take a bulkhead out. We cut it flush, okay, at the base in, in the water. We leave the under story of the timbers in place, but they specifically asked for this, and so it reduces the harm to the intertidal marsh that is landward, that has grown because the bulkhead was dilapidated for a number of years.
James.
But he still has rights to reconstruct it, but they specifically wanted it to be reconstructed at the C-word base, so typically we call it a, within 18 inches reconstruction. That's what we used to call it, when we left the timber in place, and then we went in front, and the board usually allows one of those. So this is his one time to go out in the front, and the state specifically asked for this to reduce, you know, disturbance, remember with the bulkhead, and preserve as much of the vegetation as possible. So that's where we are.
And it'll be a low sill?
It's low sill, yeah.
Low sill, so the water can come back for it.
Correct.
Yeah.
So basically, is, is constructed at the grade that currently exists right now.
It's going to be done on the water side, or?
On the water side, so a typical reconstruction within 80 to 18 inches is what the, it's called.
James, can you just show the pictures taken at grade? Because it, it shows how healthy this buffer is and how healthy this wetland is.
It's very healthy.
So we just want to preserve that, and you will.
Yes, and goal is not to disturb that.
My one concern is the original bulkhead that there is leaning over, and you're looking to do 18 inches in front of the vertical bulkhead that was there originally, or the bulkhead that's currently there that's leaning over may be 18 inches.
Well, the bulkhead that's there right now, but keep in mind, the base of the bulkhead is actually, it goes like this, you know, so it's bowing out. So it's an illusion that it's out further than it really is, it's not...
So it's basically going to be in level?
It's going to be aligned with what's there?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll pretty much be aligned with exactly what's there.
Because it's that...
Because by the time you cut that down, the original part of the bulkhead is still in its original, you know, spot here.
It's the top part that's...
So the top part is what's bowing.
Right, so where's the plans?
Pretty much going to be exactly where it is right now, by this time it's cut down.
This is all, this is all the pictures and the plans.
So it's bowing about 18 inches.
So the replacement bulkhead, is it going to have tie rods and dead men?
No.
Or is it going to be, I can't believe it, free skin?
Can't believe it, bulkhead.
And it's gonna use corrugated.
Yes.
Uh, material?
About, um, yeah, of the lower version, which is about nine inches wide, plus, you know, one pile, which is nine inches, so it's eighteen inches.
What is?
Okay.
Yeah, so the total.
And and that and that structure is gonna be strong enough to be able to withstand.
Yeah, because he's gonna keep the pilings a little tall.
What's this dimension?
You know, so you can see, because it's really important to keep the pilings a little higher. Because when this thing is underwater and they have water prep going in and out of there, you wanna be able to see where this bulkhead is and not run into it.
Well, if you wanna tie a boat in front of it, if you have a low sill bulkhead or something like that.
Exactly.
You know, you're going to have issue because it's gonna sit on top of the metal.
So I designed a little bit longer pile, so it's a little stronger and it goes a little deeper specifically.
Yeah, that was that was my question.
I know, this looks like this looks like it's on this plan, it looks like it comes out a lot more. I think, I think what we have to.
Surveyor is locating actually the top of the the bulkhead, which at some places actually bows out about two feet.
But the trouble, will the dock go by those plants?
But but if you look at this, I think this is gonna be a lot of shock to the community when they see this thing popping out like this.
Well, it is now already.
See, that's the thing, it's an illusion because it's actually gonna be exactly where it is right now by the time it's done.
Scott, look at, look at the the shot, the photos.
No, I I I, believe me, I understand what you're saying. I'm looking at it, but I'm looking at this and I know what we're doing with here.
There is one section that comes out a little further, um right where it meets Vito's.
Yes, to the north.
Yes, right.
That was my question, why, I mean, it looks like about eighteen inches where, you know, it had separated.
Yes, so basically, i- if you could just visualize, about where the top is, where it connects with Vito's, is about where the new bulkhead is actually going to be when it goes out.
So what's what's this dimension, can you?
And the surveyor located the top of the wall, not actually the bottom.
Is that?
No.
Does that give you anything?
So there's, you know, illusion that we're going out a little further than.
Here, where it bumps out.
Into the ground, but we're not.
It's supposed to be eighteen inches.
Maybe ask a teenager.
Nine inches for the.
So it's nine inches for the pile, nine inches for the actual corrugated vinyl, so it's gonna go out, extend eighteen inches from the base of where the bulkhead was.
So it's gonna look, so if you look at this, it's going to look. It's gonna be nine inches further out than what we're looking here.
Right, so about eighteen inches further seaward than actual, the line of Vito Saladino's to the north. So about eighteen inches out from that.
That's what the state's already.
Right, so and then um we obviously have to have some kind of return because it's gonna stick out about eighteen inches from Vito's bulkhead.
Is Vito's bulkhead a brand new bulkhead?
It's it's, I didn't do the permit, but it's pretty new, yes.
I mean, would it be?
It's now.
Uh, just an idea, would it be, could the dock bill assist to the new low sill bulk up, bulkhead up to this, so you don't have any more disturbance going back?
If he has a return.
We don't have to because we're gonna have a a small return there.
Ten foot return.
Yeah, we need to have a small return because we need to cover that eighteen inches and not leave a gap.
Well, that return that you're putting back, how, I mean, because you have a very good wetlands here, I mean, this is like, you know, the perfect wetlands.
Yes.
Um, how is that gonna affect that water circulation in this, on this property with a return?
It shouldn't.
Is it gonna be like flush with the ground and?
Yeah, it's gonna be flush with the ground, um and and Vito's property actually goes up a little bit. So it may be slightly higher than the low sill bulkhead just to contain his property. Um, so it's it's gonna be interesting uh to see this, you know, and it's gonna be like almost like an as-built. It may be a couple of inches higher than the low sill bulkhead because we have to contain his property and match up with him.
Looking at this picture here, where the vegetated wetland is, is that about ten feet back, that wetland?
Uh, roughly ten to fifteen feet, it's about fifteen actually.
So that that low sill bulkhead would be basically buried right in here.
Yes, you won't see it.
You won't see it.
Won't see it. Now, according to Vito's, with that picture, that's actually interesting. So you see the walkway? There's a section of Vito's bulkhead about ten feet wide, doesn't really show on the survey, that's actually lower with through flow. So the walkway doesn't extend all the way to his property line. There's a lower section that steps down, um and with through flow on the top cap. So you can't really see it in that picture. Um, so the actual low sill bulkhead will be about twelve, eighteen inches lower than that. So it's almost like staged. So the return will actually connect to the lower part of Vito's bulkhead where the through flow is.
Okay.
That's actually stepped down already.
So it's almost terrace.
Yes.
And and the proposed piling height, would it be similar to what is on this picture here?
Yes, to Vito's. It'll be, it'll stick out.
Yeah, for navigational purposes.
More than navigational purposes for the fact that the pilings are gonna be higher, um, more length, I should say. So they're gonna be um longer and then, you know, it'll have to stick up for navigational and for tidal reasons, yes.
So are, as far as the uh material you're using, are they gonna be round pilings or?
Round.
Dimensional, six by six, if you're using six by six, then you can really, yeah.
Not sturdy enough.
Not sturdy enough, not, okay.
No, they're not gonna be sturdy enough, so it's gonna have to be like a an eight inch, nine inch butt end.
Okay.
Um, you know, because they do need to last.
Well, the the six by six does last too, but it's.
I don't see what's available, but you know.
I I mean, I like the dimensional lumber because it makes it look like a nice neat job and it actually cuts down only three inches, but it it keeps everything closer.
I'll have to see what's available at this point, and part of me does agree with you, only because, you know, we're having a situation in Guyana, South America, and there are no more big trees to cut. So what they're doing is they're taking the bigger trees and they're milling them down to six by sixes, so, which is unfortunate.
Environmentally not a good thing.
Environmentally not a good thing, but at this point, they're taking what they can, yeah, they're cutting everything and they're milling it down to their size.
Policies, they try and say sustainably sourced, but apparently not over one period of time.
We're literally seriously cutting off our no-spare.
Have you ever tried the fragilous pole poles here?
Not, not here.
I don't think they'd be rigid enough, Billy, unless you put something inside of them.
No, they have to be filled with concrete.
Have to look at policy.
You know, it's just, we, yes, we do have to go back to rethinking this whole situation.
Well, things have changed, everything's changed now. Process has changed.
The process has changed.
Because the fairies are using the fragilous poles for bundle.
Even the treatments they use now are not.
I mean, we could go on for an hour here.
We can't do that with this. Yeah, that's gonna be a different public hearing, I think. That's gonna be a different conversation.
Fifty times quicker than.
It's gonna be a different conversation.
This is just.
Right, it's it's.
We've gotta move on.
We gotta move on.
We need to move on because this is too big of a conversation.
All right, so where we at, where we at on this here?
So.
We're, we're good, right? As far as, are you guys okay with this?
Yes.
The way it's described now that you understand, yeah, I think we can move this forward, please.
Okay.
You just need stamp plans.
With stamp plans.
Yes, thank you for entertaining.
That's that's it for today, right, for you?
Yes.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Thanks.
All right. Now you have Strong's Marina here. Right, come on up. And you have any consultants here as well?
Yes.
Hey Jeff again.
I gave him a text because he looked worried.
I'm sorry?
I texted because you looked worried.
Oh, yeah. Where is this guy? I did something to my back.
That guy was moving in on to your back.
I did, and I don't know what.
Doesn't sound like it was a good idea whatever.
It's, it's been an interesting morning, so I apologize I'm late. Um, want me to start?
Yes.
Okay, so uh we had, this had been on, I guess either Jeff or Brian Strong were here at one of your last meetings. This is for the marina that Strong's recently purchased over by the college. Um, there were a couple of questions that had arisen. One had to do with the layout of the plan. Um, the some, the prior owners had changed the historically existing dock configuration from like one dock that went straight out to the sort of new configuration that exists today. And so one of the questions was whether there were any, oh, there you go, right behind me, uh whether there were any old permits from the trustees. And we had submitted two, which James is kindly showing you. One, there was an original permit for the original dock construction in the sixties, and then I think it was nineteen eighty-six, um, that Roy Hagee had actually come in, yeah, that's it there. Um, where there was a permit that changed the configuration to what it is today. Uh, the board had noticed there, the prior owners had probably added a couple of floats here and there um over time. And there are encroachments on the two lateral property lines. So in addition to asking us if we could provide copies of the old permits, um, you asked if I could provide, we're working well to hit here, James, perfectly, but an updated plan showing the extension of the lateral uh property lines with those two encroachments, which I showed and James is showing you now. Um, and relative to those encroachments had asked if we could obtain letters of consent from both of the adjoining property owners, uh acknowledging uh that those encroachments exist and consenting to Strong's replacing them, obviously contingent to your approval and everyone else's, but um, if they could be replaced in place as they're shown. Uh, so we were able to provide uh letters, I think Jeff, you ended up talking to both the owners, they both provided letters, James is showing those now. Uh, Ferrer on one side and Cirillo on the other.
Good.
Um, so we were able to respond to all of your different requests in terms of the plans, the letters, and the permits. And now it's kind of back in the board's hands.
I do one question on the uh the letters.
Sure.
Should they be notarized? I mean, I know it's a technicality, but I I wanna make sure if we're gonna.
It's a good idea.
Uh, bring this in there and allow a neighbor to basically allow something that would be, you know, pre-existing non-conforming. I wanna make sure that we have, you know, them notarized, that they they're actually the person that.
What do you think, Mark?
Mark, are you satisfied with this, these letters?
They just add, they did, I don't know what matters, but they did mail them to us too, so it's, you know, not like just a letter.
So you have, are they?
They emailed also, so like I have, I mean, I could provide you with a copy of the emails that show it came from their director.
With the level of documentation that they're stating on the record right now, do you feel sufficient?
And you know, I'm I'm a proponent of not having notaries. Most of the time, they only need to be required technically on attestation clauses of wills and some family law documents showing income and things like that. Um, in this case, it might be helpful since this is more in in line of like an affidavit, so if it were notarized, I think it would be better. If the if the each neighbor, um, you know, signed in front of a notary, uh that that would be preferable. And of course, obviously, the trustees trustees are considering that if both neighbors sell the property, the subsequent neighbors might take the contrary position.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the only, that's why I wanna make sure that, you know, it's gonna be the current neighbors that we're, you know, doing this application review in front of. And, you know, not worried about what's gonna happen in the future, that's beyond our control, so.
Do you keep boats on both sides of those slip, or the floats on the on the north side? Where it goes over the neighbors? Like the, you have a boat on one side or on both sides? I just had a curiosity.
Yeah, let me just get oriented there. That's looking out to the.
I can see the pilings, see the pilings?
Yes, well, the pilings are on the south side, right, and the piling outlook, if I'm looking at it right at the tip, right, right, right there. I I believe so, but I honestly am not positive in that. And on the south side, it's not, it's different because it's just, you know, stern stern in.
Stern in.
So basically, you've provided everything that the board had asked you to provide to kind of memorialize this. Um, the only question is, from a documentation standpoint, having a notarized document versus having the documentation that you provided, is that what my understanding is, that the only issue or concern here is?
I'm sure I could meet with the neighbors, one's in town, one's out of town, but, you know, I'm sure I can get that done.
Okay, I mean, I that would satisfy, I think, everybody's concerns here.
I just wanna protect you and protect the neighbors, in case someone, if they sold a house in the near future, you know. I don't want them coming and complaining.
Correct that you also need an engineer stamp on the plans.
Yes, exactly, that's.
Yeah, so we can provide you with um both of those.
I think that makes the most sense for everybody, especially.
You have an overhead chart.
Yep.
Just to cover.
One question. Uh, should we ask for an as-built survey once this is completely done so that we have it for our files moving forward? If the neighbor says anything, well, this is over here, this is over there, I'm talking about.
You mean after the replacement?
After the replacement, so that way, you know, basically, I mean, we had asked um several several mariners to do this in my area when I first became on the board because they had done replacements, done replacements, done replacements, and it was like twenty years of replacements and we didn't have one survey showing the current actual footprint of the marina. Uh, we're allowing stuff here that, you know, you know, uh people, if people question, well, in nineteen, in two thousand and twenty-three, at this meeting, they submitted these, you know, stamp, you know, survey that this is what is currently there. Because like you said, there's been alteration done over time, we have to go through permit by permit that was there, so we have the master set in two thousand and twenty-three. And then I think it would be a lot easier for for our board moving forward.
It can't hurt, I mean, it's good to have that as documentation. I mean, nowadays, we have these aerial shots where, you know.
I know, but.
You can see, like, okay, you guys added whatever was in there last year, it's there now, you know what I mean, so you, you know, it can't hurt.
I mean, you have, you have plans here showing, you know, it would be nice to have a survey to show in once and for all what we permitted for future boards to reference.
It sounds like you're just asking for an as-built the way the building department would ask for an as-built after you've been cooling.
Basically.
Right, yes.
And I think it's just gonna protect everybody here.
As long as it's all the same, Ken doesn't have to do very much.
No, we're just exactly.
No, because when we send our new dock inspector George down there and he looks at these plans and he goes, I wanna make sure that he goes down there with the most current survey and what's there, and then he could just take his little tape and his little wheel and wheel and do. And then it comes back and there's no issues and then, you know, basically, we've learned and everybody else has learned and he's learned that, you know, th- these surveys do, you know, pay for themselves, so, okay.
Do you want that condition on the, on their cover sheet, or do you want to just add it to their, to the resolution?
I mean, I think it should be right on the cover sheet so that, you know, or, I mean.
We put it on the cover sheet.
Just add.
Either way, that's.
As-built survey when when everything is.
You need to use the cover sheet, Mark, or you think that the resolution is division?
As long as it may be referenced, I mean.
Yeah, I think it's fine if it's just on the cover sheet. I think that's okay.
You're losing me there. You want me to change the project description to say, and we're gonna, I mean, that would seem like to me, like, that'd be a condition to the board, it wouldn't be something we would propose as the applicant.
Yeah, that's what I'm I'm asking yourself.
Should it be a special condition?
Special condition to permit, just says that they.
We can do a special condition in a permit.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
And and then we'll have it in the file forever, so.
We're wearing a belt, we're putting suspenders on to them, just in case.
Right, yeah. Now, I'm just, I'm just asking, is the cover sheet, we're like, we're laying out what we're proposing to do.
And then when it's special edition, that when it's all done, this is what we need to come up with.
Yeah, so for compliance.
Yes.
We have to have that.
That's what I want.
Can't get a CC without that.
Right.
The resolution will have that condition.
Yep, that way when George goes down there, he has it in hand and it'll make his life easier, all like he's here and everybody's and the communities, you know, know exactly what's happening, so, yeah.
All right, is everybody clear with what we need for the next step of this?
I do have one question about the next step of it. Is this something that the board can now vote to approve, conditioned upon submission of these two things? Or do we get now move to another work session?
If it were all possible to, just to add one other piece, because we're desiring to have these be aluminum docks, um, which a contractor, you know, will build those, so we're hopeful to be able to have at least an indication that, yeah, we're good, you know, to be able to move forward so we can hit the go button on beginning, you know, the process.
Of making the docks.
Pfrab docks, kind of like what we have at our facility by the college.
Correct.
Yeah, I I don't see why we'd have any issue with that.
No.
I mean, actually, they put conduits for electric and water and it makes the whole project much more streamlined.
Clean, yeah.
So that that, I don't think we'd have any problem with that.
I don't, I don't have an issue. I don't know how the office uh function, you feel comfortable with that?
With the aluminum docks?
No, no, the advantages to process here.
Moving forward without the notarized neighbor statement.
You know, pending, you know, we'd have to review that subject.
You have to review that.
We'd have to review it at the last work session anyway, because the stamp plans have to go, it's gonna end up in another work session.
Okay.
So.
It's on the.
It's in the process, it's gonna end up in one more work session anyway. As as long as you provide all the documentation. Everything that you need, then, and it's there for us to clearly see it, then you you won't have to come to that.
But then it would be moved to the approval the same day?
Then it would go to.
No, it would be on. If we get the, all the material would be at our next meeting, and then it would be, and if everything was there, we would approve it at, or vote on it at May meeting.
First meeting in May.
April seventeenth, and then it would go on the regular in May, the first meeting in May.
Right, but you can, we can advance, but you're still gonna be stuck with one more work session for review of those stamp engineered plans because, you know, we gotta make sure what we resolve to is exactly what we talked about.
But everything is moving forward.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right, just going through the process, that's all.
What are the dates of those next two meetings?
Seventeen, please.
Yeah, April seventeen and then May.
Sixth?
Sixth.
Okay.
So in theory, it'd be done by May sixth.
Okay. Okay.
So everybody's in, you know, everybody's in agreement.
So it all should come together, right?
It should come together. Because you're supplying everything the board's requesting, so everybody's good with what you've got going on. It's just a matter of process. You go with that?
May 8th.
May 8th?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Do you have a choice?
No, but I mean, sometimes people can't comply with, you know, they can't get this stuff in time.
It's May 1st, it's May 1st, you guys.
When we rush these processes, sometimes we miss something and then it, then it gets delayed a ton.
I tell my clients that every day, Ed.
Yeah.
I don't want to rush through this time. I know it's a process, but, you know, I think we're pretty efficient here, so.
So I hear a last call on that date is being May 1st?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, but April 17th is when we need to get the notarized letters-
Everything, yep.
And the stamped plans.
Okay.
Any pressure?
I just have to reach, I mean, the neighbors were both pretty good, so just tell them that they're okay with it, but they're going to ask that the letters be notarized. And I can just email them with the notary spot. We often don't do that with the neighbors because like it's hard enough to get neighbors to cooperate and then when you add a notary, it's like, we can't even get our own clients to get notaries without griping.
The one person's 91 years old and he's like, you know, kind of stay-at-home kind of person.
All right.
He might have to bring a notary there.
Which has been done before.
Yeah.
All right.
Especially, you know, if he's going to eventually sell the house.
Listen, you do have good documentation that you have provided to the board today.
Yes.
You have, you have provided excellent documentation. And to your point, you have, you know, you have the mailing documentation, you have, you know, it's just, we're just really trying to be very careful in terms of documentation.
Okay.
You want to do 120 Island Creek?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're free.
I'm good.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, have a nice week.
Thanks, Jeff.
Take good care, you too.
I'll get those things updated and sent to you this afternoon.
Appreciate it.
All right, where are we going?
So this was the Beretta Dock?
Yeah.
I'm just going to look for James' drink, burger.
Do you have any paperwork?
Nothing I haven't given you.
Okay.
Go ahead, Chuck.
Nothing, nothing to support. But yeah, no, I mean, I don't really have much to present on this. I mean, this is the, this is a dock that is similar. I don't know, James, if you can, maybe, God, man, this is, so it's similar to, you know, dock that's, that's next door. There is, that is also a floating dock that floats, not in that particular aerial. But we got the hydrographic soundings from Ken Wojcik, and we prepared a plan based on that. Yeah, so that's the-
I'm sorry.
That's all right. So that was the, that had been the Hydra map from Ken. This is the plan, the schematic project plan from us, right? We don't have engineer plans yet. So that is based on the Hydra survey. You can see that the dock is, you know, the shoreline's a little bit irregular there, but basically tucked in relative to the adjacent dock, so it's not creating any new navigational issue. The water depth there was good.
You actually could pull it back a little bit.
Well, we have, generally, the, the state wants us to be, have the entire float in 30 inches of water, which is why we've laid it out the way we have. And I, I didn't bring it in any further just because it's already tucked in so far relative to the adjacent dock, that I didn't really see that as an issue. We were trying to maximize the water depth since there was not a encroachment issue. I mean, that was our, that was our take on it.
James? So he's got 30 inches.
Yeah. I, I want, it could have been 30 inches closer, but how? I'm fine with how it is now, but I just wanted to ask that.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's a little bit.
We kind of hit the-
You're kind of darn close.
Yes, because it's, that's where the, it's right on the edge of the channel.
You, you, yeah, he's got the 30 there and I see the other 30, it's really, and it, the way it kind of contours.
Well, that's why, because the shoreline kind of hangs like that.
Right, contours, yeah, I see, I see there.
I didn't, I didn't want to drag it in.
It's pretty hard bottom there.
Yeah, we, we-
Yeah, that would make sense.
I think, I think you-
You drew a line between the two 30s and then-
That's what we did.
I think you, I think you're good.
So that would make sense.
You good?
I'm fine with it.
I'm good.
You good? You good? Everybody's good?
Just stamped plans, right?
Stamped.
Okay.
And you plan?
We'll get you both. So same schedule as the other, more or less?
Correct.
Work session 17.
Without the additional paperwork.
Right.
And I apologize for that. It is the first.
Now, it's good. It's always better to be wrong than say something better.
Hope your back feels better.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, my God.
I know how you feel.
Been there, we've all been there. Anything Parmesan usually helps.
No, it doesn't.
For me, it does.
Comfort food.
Chicken parm.
Just set dinner up for me, Scott.
There you go. Pasta, nice salad. This guy is going to be mad at me.
All right, thank you, guys.
Take care now.
Take care. Hope your back, hope your back feels better.
Thank you. Thanks, Bill. All right.
Four Springville?
Four Springville Circle Hampton Bays.
Patiently waiting.
Enjoyable.
Okay. Go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm not really sure where I even begin because it's a very complicated case.
I mean, trustee, you want to, you want to give a synopsis?
Yes, these, they had an application to replace a dock which we permitted, legally permitted, but the neighbor had issue with it because it was over the extended property line. And so to resolve their issue, the Rubia Urbano's decided to come to our board, get a permit for a dock to replace the existing dock and move it over, which we permitted. They did submit paperwork. The dock was built and in the character of work, the, there was a seven-foot section that was not mentioned, but on the original plans, there was a picture of, of an access ramp, which was the violation that was given for the dock. It basically, it comes off the property over the bulkhead and it allows them to access the catwalk ramp and float. Without it, they wouldn't be able to get there. So it was not on the character of work, but it was on the plans. So when we reviewed it, we didn't pick this seven-foot dock up. Subsequently, the permit has expired or-
It didn't expire. The work was done prior to the expiration. It was not inspected till after it expired.
Yeah, after it expired. So what, what I believe you're here for is that we're asking them to get a, an as-built survey for the whole entire structure, where in reality, it's only the seven-foot that was in question.
I don't think this, I don't think the seven-foot was in question. I think it was just the four-foot ramp to get on it.
Four foot or is it seven foot?
It's just a little ramp to get on it.
Yeah, which I'm showing everybody right here.
That's all it is.
So it was not included in this character of work, but it was included on the plans.
So it's a, so this whole thing's about a four-foot ramp to get onto the catwalk?
Just, just to be able to get on it because it's elevated now.
They're looking to amend it to include this and then not pay the as-built fee for the whole entire-
Well, was the dock-
The, the question, the reason why it's on here is the discussion for the board. We received the modification to include the ramp because the original permit description did not have a ramp on there.
This is the unended.
Hang on a second. The modification was submitted without an as-built fee. We requested it and they're requesting you guys to review whether it needs an as-built fee or not.
Or amendment for a four-foot ramp.
Right, because they had a violation that-
Which was on the plans, but-
It wasn't on the cover sheet.
Accidentally amended on the cover sheet. It was on the plans.
Yes.
So they did represent to us that they were going to do it, it's just there was a bit of an error there.
My husband did not write that we would put access to get up on it.
So you got, you got a couple of, couple of things.
And it was, it was, there was no agent involved. Your husband did all the-
Yeah, this, you know, this has been going on for about five years.
That's fine, that's fine.
That's the whole thing.
Gina actually represented us at the beginning. I recognize her. It's, it's just been complicated and we thought we were done. The dock got done and we were waiting for the permit and then it came.
Right, so this is all about a four-foot ramp to get up to the catwalk.
Which is on the land.
That's all what this is about. So they modified the permit for that or?
I think they should modify the permit, but the as-built fee, I think, should, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but I mean, I feel like, you know, it's a little excessive because-
I think because of the fact it was on the plans and we kind of, you know, because we're reviewing all this stuff, we kind of missed it too. I mean, he missed it, we missed it. What do you think, Mark? I mean, modify it and?
Were you talking about final stamp plans or?
Talking about a four-foot-
No, I know, I know.
Four by seven. Four by seven.
Before, this was before we required stamp.
This was required before we required stamp plans.
Right.
So this is a homeowner submitting it. And they're right, and it's very clearly deflected on the plans, but the character of work doesn't, you know, reference it.
Right, and technically, you'd read it's something you'd require, but the trustees, you know, can't exercise their discretion.
Yeah, I think the as, I think the as-built is excessive because it was on the plans. I think it's, you know, you had a bit of a mistake going on on two sides here.
Their fault and our fault.
Right, I think it cancels out. I think, forget the as-built, but I think whatever you got to deal with on the modification is what it is.
Appreciate that very much. I really do.
Okay?
All right.
Very much appreciate it.
So they, you haven't submitted the, the-
Well, he's, I believe he submitted it, well, I don't know if he submitted it. I think he amended it and emailed it to your office.
Okay.
I think you worked with James on what is needed.
Yep.
We did receive the application. It's right here if you do want to see it.
Which includes the ramp?
Which includes the access, right? It's the same plans that they submitted.
Originally.
Originally, so it has that access in on it.
All right, so we can put that on for the next work session or can we discuss it at this work session?
The as, but it's up to you whether you want to discuss it now while she's here.
I think we should do it now.
Yeah, because it sounds like it's minor.
The application reads as-built modification to add the wording to permit GP 000325 to reflect a four-by-seven-foot ramp to gain access to the four-foot by 42-foot catwalk. Ramp is shown on the original plant drawings, but the wording is left off the permit.
That's fair.
That's fair.
That describes, yeah.
Do we need stamp plans or is this?
What was my next question was, would be whether you need stamp-
That we permitted it originally, or is this a simple amendment?
I believe technically the blue book would require, but again, this is an area where the trustees could exercise their discretion.
This was for prior, this is a cleanup of a priorly issued permit. I think you'd make it more of a-
I think we could wait and just submit the application that we need to, you know, review the-
Modification.
Modification.
And just put a note in the file.
So no, no stamp plan?
No stamp plan.
And no as-built fee?
No.
Okay.
Because we both missed it.
So you want to advance this to the next meeting?
Yep, yes.
Next.
Thank you.
What date is that? Thank you.
April 17th.
So I'll be here for that.
Okay.
You don't, you don't, you don't have to.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Because we're, we're-
Seeing my baby's schedule.
There you go. That, that should take precedence over this.
Well, my babies do take precedence, but I appreciate everything very much.
I do have one more here, James.
You do?
Yeah.
Which one?
Five North Road Hampton Bays. It's not on there, but I haven't found it.
What's, which one?
That trustee Walker.
Oh, that's the, that's the-
Dredging.
No, that's the general, that's on the bottom.
It's on the, we're not upstate. You're jumping ahead, you're so enthusiastic today.
I am.
You're jumping ahead.
He wants his pile.
Let's see. Trustee Walker, you have 80 Harbor?
Yep.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. This is 80 Harbor Drive in Bay Point. The owner is representing himself for a proposed dock. Floating dock. He has been before this board previously and is coming back with some changes that he's requesting after previous discussion.
Requesting or be requesting?
He's requesting.
Requesting, yeah.
So do you want me to read the description of work or do you want to, do you want to describe what you're doing?
Talk about it, sure.
Okay.
So basically, the board did the landos, I have it drawn, with the stamp plan. They moved the dock to the west because the previous dock was past the pier line. The seventy-five foot pier line. Any.
Well, if you want to hand him.
Yeah.
I have it, I have two copies here.
You can.
Sure, sure.
So the original submission exceeded the pier line as the applicant is saying. And there was discussion amongst the board. The advisory letter that was submitted to the conservation board, as you can see, there's, yeah, there's a cleared pathway. And the advisory letter states that they would recommend that the dock be placed in this area. In addition, there's a discussion as to where you hit deepest water first, whether it's in the spot where the applicant is proposing, which is to the west and within ten, just outside of ten feet of the property line. And also, the other point here is that the dock as proposed is straight out, not on an L as was suggested by the board. So this is the previous, this is the current one.
This is the current?
Yeah.
Application?
Yep. James, do you want to weigh in a little bit on this perhaps? Do you want to weigh in a little bit on this maybe?
Speeding blue book regulations now, James?
So.
No.
It's not?
Well.
It does.
James, sorry, it does.
Technically does, it's off ten feet. They brought it into two and a half feet of water, just under two, two point four. It's just a matter of, I know that the trustees have discussed moving it to the area that's disturbed already based off of your prior discussions as well as the conservation board recommendations. So it's, it's really up to the board to make that decision.
Sorry.
So what have you got to say?
So the, the L shape would be if it was over the area that was, where there was a walkway. So we would propose to have it to the west and re-vegetate that walkway. We've made a vegetation and as long as we adhere to that pier line, which we, we're going to do because the two and a half foot depth contour line curves in, so we reach deeper water and we're able to achieve that.
Yeah, and you need, the other one, the other location, the dock would need to be longer and it wouldn't conform to our original regulations.
Challer of water, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not sure if that's correct. I would have to see it on the plan to measure it out, but I think with the T shape or an L shape in that middle section, it would meet the, the pier line.
It would with an L shape, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I thought you meant with going straight out.
Going straight out, it wouldn't, yes. It would not meet it, which was previously looked at.
Doing that.
The other, the other thing I had a question about, given that the dock is offset from the property lines of about ten feet and six inches. Remind me, your, the length of your boat is.
Thirty-four.
Right.
So it's going to be overhanging at ten?
But our pro, our code reads.
Right.
That it's just the dock.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter about the boat.
What are the other regulatory authorities got plus? What are the other regulatory authority limits on that or do they not have?
I think it's just the structure side of the boat.
What is, on the structure side, is there's ten or there's fifteen?
I think Army Corps is fifteen.
Army Corps.
That's why I raise that because these, these, these may not be acceptable plans per the Army Corps.
They're not.
And then you may, you may have a project you can't build. So you may want to consider it, which is why I think we were talking about this other configuration because you have to comply with everybody's permits.
Right.
So I, you know.
It's at the, it's at the Army Corps, I haven't heard anything.
I think that their, their, their numbers, I think, are greater than our numbers. So I, I really think that you need to take a look at this before you drive forward here.
You need to ask that question before you.
Because you may end up putting yourself in a situation where you're coming back for a modification if something you can't build.
Well, you already are in that situation because you have an Army Corps permit at this point, which does not jive with what we are looking at. Because you submitted it before we had approved this.
Is it Army Corps approval? I didn't, I didn't see that.
So it's dated March fifteenth?
Is, is there any?
It would need to be modified anyway. Because that length of dock is sixty-four feet and it's been changed subsequent to that to fifty-eight six. And then the other question is if, if. Are we requiring chocks on this?
No, because it's, you got adequate, you got adequate water, you got thirty inches of water.
It's two point four.
They're showing, see, they're showing a different number here though. You got a number?
See, that's the other thing.
They're showing almost fourteen feet.
Well, that's, that's what we're looking at here.
Yeah, so he shifted.
Oh, I see, yeah, it's the one I sent was ten five. Yeah, I got it.
And that's the Army Corps?
Yes.
So they approved, so they.
They approved the prior project, so you have to go back to them anyway.
Can I resubmit this to them?
Yeah, they, they're looking at this project here, this is the one we're reviewing right now.
No, that's the old one.
That's the old.
That's the one that meets with this. This is the new one.
Yeah, the thing that I looked at was.
Because the.
The, the new proposal is, brings it even further to the property line to ten, ten five, which gets them to the two point four, two point five.
That's what I saw.
The, the original project, which was approved by the Army Corps is at thirteen nine or something like that.
That's what I was looking at.
Yeah, so this, all right, this is old.
So can I bring this back to the Army Corps to get this approved, the, the new one? Since they, they already approved the old one?
You, if the trustees, if the trustees approve, you would have to.
Okay.
To get a modification from the Army Corps, but.
So they, they already approved it?
We're not, we're not there yet, it sounds like. We're not there yet because you don't have consensus on the board to do that yet, so. Trustee Walker. Trustee Walker.
Yeah. I'm just concerned that there's some inconsistencies here and that we need to be moving forward with as much, I'm concerned about the dock being over to the western side of the property line, I'm concerned about it, the, this large boat being close to the property line, I'm concerned about, although you're saying you will re-vegetate if, if we don't use the existing cleared pathway.
Right.
Because it, the, usually, we use what, the place that's been already disturbed. So we're moving to the side to, for aesthetic purposes. And also because of the, the draft of this boat, because it's a large boat. So.
It's outboard. Was it outboard, just for safety with docking, I found coming in straight is much easier than the outboards are in deeper water. So if there's current and there's wind when the dock is the other way, I run into that situation where it becomes, it becomes.
It's a big boat, yeah, for this spot.
But we're pushing the whole project to one side of the property and where we can actually have a dock in the middle of the property, use disturbed area and have adequate water, but it's an L shape. I, I don't know, it's, that, to me would be the most appropriate is because you're pushing, you're basically taking your, your whole dock and your boat and you're putting it over so your neighbors see it, it's more appropriate to have it in the middle. I mean, you have disturbed, you have the ability to have there, they have the water depth, so that to me makes it the, a place where as a trustee, I would recommend it.
What's the beam with that vessel? If you're putting it on the outward side, you're going to be putting yourself in that zone, that's going to be creating issues.
Well, I mean.
What's the beam of this vessel?
Eleven feet.
So you're going to be over, you.
So you're, so you're going to be, you're going to be overhanging the extended property lines is what you're going to do. So you're, you're basically.
Yeah, you know, yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to block the neighbor's view, that, that it is a peninsula, so the neighbor, you can see the dock of the neighbor is actually pointing out towards, towards the west.
But, but your, your dock is going to be right here, literally.
Mm-hmm.
I think it should be.
And the boat's going to be.
Agreed.
I, I think it should be in the middle part of the property, that's my.
That's what we've been doing. That's what consistently we've been doing is, and it just seems, go ahead, Scott.
Consistently, we've been getting headaches when we haven't been doing that, which is why we ended up having to put the other applicant that was here through a substantial amount of required documentation.
But, but that was, those are docks that have been there for decades.
Right, exactly. That's a tremendous amount of documentation for something that's been historical and here we are with brand new.
I mean, Scott, if you, if you do dock the boat on the south or west side, I mean, it's going to be eleven feet over and another fourteen feet out, so it's going to be.
Over the line.
And you have the foot in between the.
And it's a large structure in front, I, I don't think it's appropriate.
I think you need to go back to the drawing board, I think this is going to be problematic for many reasons.
I mean, you have a unique piece of property where you have the ability to center it, you have the ability to have the water depth.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's my take, so.
I agree.
Back to the drawing.
Back to the drawing. So if I'm re-veging and we're, you're ending up with more vegetation than before, still that doesn't hold any weight.
Because as you pointed out, the amount of re-veg is minimal because it's a two-foot wide pathway by ten feet. So, but our practice is to use disturbed areas to, so to not promote additional disturbance in the wetlands on the property. So that's why we're saying use where that walkway is now for your dock. If you, if you wish access to, just put steps down from the dock, if you, if you're, you know, if you want to use the waterway there, that, that's how you do that.
I mean, and if you couldn't acquire the water depth, we would view this differently. You can acquire the water depth, so.
And so would you like me to come back with a drawing over the walkway L shape?
Yes.
Within the pier line?
Yes.
And does the L shape have to go east or west? Is there a reference there?
Whichever, well, water depth, you acquire the most water depth, that would be the most appropriate.
And get the most clearance on the adjoining property lines.
It's in the middle, it's in the middle of the property.
And you should be fine either way.
You'd be, you'd have a sweet spot there.
I mean, it's deeper to the west, is that, would that be, would that be okay?
Yeah, that would be more, if it's a half a foot deeper, that'd be the most appropriate.
Yeah, you can see that the water depth contour line, it does get deeper in there, so.
That'd make the most sense.
Yeah. And if we want to go, just for clarity, if we want to not go over the walkway and come over just a little bit, let's say between the dock and the walkway and re-veg, that is that, that's not.
No.
Not good.
Let's, yeah.
All right, all right, so we'll come back to that.
Trying to check all these boxes to make this thing to be an approvable project.
Okay, that's fine.
Get you going.
Yeah, all right. So can I resubmit, is it advisable to resubmit to the other?
I would wait.
No, wait.
You should wait till this gets set in.
Yeah, let us work through it.
Let's get through this and approve and then, just a minute.
I'll come back with that.
Do this first.
So I'll be back on the next.
No, you, you have to submit your.
I'll submit?
Yep.
I'll make sure that.
The sample.
And another cover sheet, right?
Yep.
Yep, yep.
And how many copies do we need?
Just.
Just one?
One.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, you need two to resubmit.
Yeah, two.
Sorry.
Any questions, just give James a call, he will provide whatever guidance you need to get you to the next step here.
Very good, I'll come back with stamp plans hopefully next time. If you have anything you need.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we got trustee parish, I think, now, right? We're up trustee parish?
Yes, this is nine sixteen Flanders Road in Flanders. This was originally on in two thousand and twenty, where they were seeking the construction four foot by, four foot by one hundred and four foot long pier with an aluminum ramp and a six foot wide by twenty foot long floating dock.
Let's take a look at this.
And they resubmitted.
Was this approved one time?
No.
No, it was, it was held and it was pretty much denied at a work session because they didn't have the water depth and it was too far out and the property lines came across.
You know what? Yeah, I remember this, let's take a look at this.
So they reduced it back to just a walkway with a ladder down.
For four foot by ninety foot fixed pier.
Let's take a look at the water depths because I don't think there's water there.
Yeah, we remember this one.
But it's a fixed pier.
Fixed pier with a ladder, stairs down to.
It's a place.
Or a platform.
Let's take a.
How long is it? Ninety-six feet?
You would have a fixed pier if you don't have appreciable water depth in a certain period of time.
And is there a bathymetry that's more extensive or is it just this?
You can show that, what's, you need the water depth.
You might be able to see it better on the.
On the hard copy?
The actual plan there.
Where's the hydro?
Is there a bathymetry for this?
That's what we need to see.
There are water depths, they're, they're.
Yeah, it's hard to see.
If you can't, if you can't make appreciable water depth in a certain period of time.
You should be able to see it better on the, on the plans.
On, on the plans, so on the hard copy?
The, the plans are tiny.
Oh, we got to be able to see water depths on this.
Because I believe it's under, I believe it's under a foot, is this, I think it's zero four four.
There's no water there.
Right.